Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for joining us tonight for the two thousand twenty-two. Candidates Forum presented to you by Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce Backpack. And we are joined tonight by our city council candidates for both District One and District Three. A big thank you to our candidates for being here for agreeing to participate in this year's event. So what we're going to do right now is going to quickly go through the rules and format for today's event. First and foremost, this is a ninety-minute event. Our objective was to get started by five o'clock. Unfortunately, we had to work through some technical snafus, so we're getting started here about ten minutes later. So we will end by no later than six forty. Way the format's going to go is we will start after I finish my remarks, we will start with candidate introductions. And each candidate will have up to two minutes to complete their introductions. When your time begins, you can see the screen behind me will change through a timer. And this timer will count down so that you can follow along. Okay, you don't have to use all two minutes. You're welcome to use all two minutes if you like. I asked that you do finish by the allotted time that you have. If you're in the middle of a sentence when the timer expires, you'll be allowed to finish that, but if you try to keep adding on, we will we will have to stop you from that point on. I think I have one second. Okay, so once we complete our candidate introductions, then we will begin our questions. Each candidate will have ninety seconds for each question. Again, there will be a timer that appears behind me. This timer will count down the time. Please keep your comments within that ninety-second timeframe. We ask, of course, that you keep your your comments on points, that you refrain from vulgarity and treat each other civilly, as I know that you will. You're all experienced at this by now, and so this is meant to be a forum that gathers information based on the public, your positions on issues of importance to the business community. So all the questions that you're going to receive will come with some perspective from the business community. The questions that you will be asked were generated by the Backpack Board of Directors, who created these questions in conjunction with the survey that the chamber ran of our members here earlier this year. Some of these questions you may recognize from our individual candidate interviews, but we will be going through at least eight questions over the course of the next ninety minutes. At the end of the event, when we complete our questions, we will then have a final summary allowed for each candidate. Again, it will be up to two minutes. And once we complete the candidate summaries, we will then conclude tonight's events. So are there any questions as we get started? Okay, seeing no questions, and I'm going to check really quickly to make sure. Sorry, I don't know why I can't get Julie's presence here tonight, but if she joins us, she will join us as we get started. So if we are ready to go, then I will go ahead and get started. I will choose the candidate that will start first. The next candidate, the next question or the next thing that we do, another candidate will start first and we will rotate through. So no candidate will start first twice in a row, no candidate will end first twice in a row, and we'll just go around in circles until we finish. With that in mind, I'd like to go ahead and invite Joel to begin our remarks. This is your your introduction, and I'm going to set the timer. When the timer starts, you're welcome to begin, sir.
Yeah, thank you for our Chamber of Commerce for this great opportunity. I'm Joe Valio. I'm running for Pleasanton City Council District three. I'm an engineer with PhD in electrical engineering. I started to work in Pleasanton in two thousand eight. And then a few years later, my family chose to call Pleasanton home because of the public safety and the greater schools. I have always been passionate about volunteering and giving back to the community. I currently serve as the Chair of the Committee on Energy and Environment, and I'm also a Tri Valley representative at the Community Advisory Committee at E B C E. I'm recently honored to receive a bang of the eight volunteerism award from my employer among ninety thousand global employees. As a father of two school-aged children, I care a lot about safety and sustainability. My top priority is a public safety. Support for our first responders is essential, including our alternate mental health program. I support a furthering environmental sustainability and collaboration with our partners, including the school district and Zone Seven. As a manager, I have led a multi-million dollar businesses and managed a large budget. I will use my professional experience to make certain the city stays on a fiscal, fiscally sustainable path. As your council member, I will work hard to enhance our small-town atmosphere. And to learn more about me, please visit my website, wodajowaliu.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joel. We'll stop the timer now. We'll move over to Dean. Dean, when the timer starts, you're welcome to begin.
Oh, thank you, James, and to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting us today. My name's Dean Wallace, and I'm running to bring a forward-looking perspective to the Pleasanton City Council. That of someone who's lived in the Tri Valley for over twenty years, went to high school here, came back after college to live close to family. And I'm someone who understands firsthand the challenges that are facing our young working families and young professionals, especially when it comes to the cost of housing. As you all know, this is the first year that Pleasanton is going to district-based elections. And District One is the most socio-economically and ethnically diverse district in our city. It is home to many of our immigrant families. I myself am an immigrant. My mother's Mexican, my father's Irish, and I was born in Ireland. And I'm so proud to live in a district with this diversity. District One is also generationally diverse. It is home to many of Pleasanton's most well-established single-family neighborhoods, but also many of its largest apartment complexes. In fact, a full quarter of Pleasanton's residents are renters, and I myself am a renter who aspires to be a homeowner someday. I bring with me over a decade of experience working with local elected officials on many of the most pressing issues that we're facing. And I want to focus on getting things done and addressing the issues that are facing the residents of Pleasanton. To that end, I pledge to engage closely with the residents of District One to improve our quality of life, preserve public safety, continue the strong partnership with our schools, cultivate economic development, and exercise fiscal responsibility. I'm very proud of the broad coalition of supporters I've been able to build so far in this campaign. I've been endorsed by a host of local elected officials, including Congressman Swalwell, Senator Steve Glazer, as well as community groups like the Pleasanton Police Officers Association. And I would be honored to add the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce to that list. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, the next up will be Jamie Ye. Jamie, you will have two minutes to introduce yourself. Your time starts when the timer starts. Jamie, you need to unmute, please.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm just having a lot of tech issues today.
Okay, go ahead and get started with the timer. When I begin the timer, you're ready to go. You have two minutes.
Again, I'm Jamie Ye, and I'm running for District Three. You may remember me from my time serving as a trustee on the Pleasanton Unified School District Board for twelve years, from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty. I represented the school district on the city's Economic Rattality Commission from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty. I'm currently a member of the city's Civic Arts Commission, and I co-chair the Tri Valley Chamber or Tri Valley Chapter of the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association. We can all agree that housing and safe and clean drinking water and our public safety are priorities. But I also believe that protecting Pleasanton's quality of life by supporting our public safety efforts, collaborating with the school district, being fiscally responsible, and balancing modern city needs while safeguarding the character of Main Street are equally important. I'm qualified to be a city council member because of my previous board governance experience in providing oversight of a public entity. I will ask tough questions, engage in open-minded, civil, transparent discussion, and consider the community's needs and desires before voting. I've held many volunteer positions, including many local PTA leadership roles, that led to eight years on the California State PTA Board. I was appointed to the California State Department of Education Environmental Literacy Task Force and represented the school district as a Tri Valley ROP Board Member. In two thousand seven, I was recognized as a California State Assemblywoman of the Year for my advocacy efforts for school nurses and school health services. Professionally, I'm employed by the Alameda County Healthcare Services Agency, which allows me to bring a public health lens. I'm a Bay Area native whose parents moved to Pleasanton in nineteen sixty-nine, and I graduated from Foothill High School and as senior class president. And I look forward to tonight's questions and answers, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum tonight.
Thank you, Jamie. Stop the timer. There we go. Okay, for our fourth candidate tonight, Jeff, you will give him two minutes to do your introductions. Your time starts when the timer starts.
All right, thank you, James. The good news is that ninety-four percent of Pleasanton residents say that our quality of life is good or excellent. The people of Pleasanton are proud of the city we have. The vision I have of Pleasanton is that of a world-class city for its size. The vision I have of Pleasanton is being a destination city for residents, visitors, and businesses alike because of the very values we hold dear, like its small-town character, superb quality of life, and beautiful environment. The alarming news is that our quality of life is being threatened. In some ways, it is under attack. We face challenges ranging from onerous unfunded state mandates and loss of our local control to significant threats to our water supply. Our city is special, and we must face these challenges and not lose Pleasanton's small-town charm. That's why this election is so important to our town and our future. We need a city council member in District One that will not only strive to achieve our vision, but also fight back against these threats and stand up for Pleasanton residents. I am very different from my opponent, who moved to Pleasanton last year, is now running on a pro-growth platform and has worked to pass state laws that strip Pleasanton of local control and take away citizen engagement and public review. My family's roots run deep in Pleasanton. As a thirty-plus-year resident of Pleasanton and current planning commissioner, I understand residents' concerns about Pleasanton today. I will make a difference in Pleasanton. As a thirty-plus-year resident, and to my fellow city residents, I say, this is an opportunity for you to get on board with me to make a difference. If you join me in this mission, we can make a difference. I am endorsed by the majority of the Pleasanton City Council, including Mayor Carla Brown, former Pleasanton Mayor Tom Pico, former city council member Cindy McGovern, and other local public servants from Pleasanton and Zone Seven. And I have just received the endorsement of the Sierra Club of California. I would appreciate, and I ask for your support.
Okay, thank you, candidates. So with this now being completed, we will now move on to our first question, which I will start our first question off with Dean. Okay, so you get ninety seconds, Dean, and here's your first question. We're going to actually start off with a pretty easy one here, just to get everybody warmed up. So question one, what is the role of a city council member? You have ninety seconds.
The question, so I think the role of a city council member, well, there's several different roles. So I'd say that the, you know, primary role obviously is to set policy and to set the vision for the city at a higher level and to work with city staff to make sure that that vision is implemented. And to that end, it means, you know, working collaboratively with city staff and with the city manager because we are a city manager, city council, form of government, and nothing can be done just by the mayor or by the city council. It has to be done in conjunction with the city manager in setting vision and policy. I think what the role isn't is micromanaging. So I don't think it is, you know, playing a role in the day-to-day management of the city or dictating from on high what businesses can go where and doing that. I also think that the role of the city council is to work closely with our business community, our residents, and our regional partners to set policy at the regional level and come up with solutions for infrastructure needs, making sure that the partnership with our schools is strong, and also making sure that we have clean water and all the things that make Pleasanton great. So being a good regional partner as a city council member is also very important.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, we will now move over to Jamie. Same question, Jamie. What is the role of a city council member?
Sorry, I have this mouse problem that makes it really hard for me.
So let me ask you the question again. I'll start the timer. So what is the role of a city council member? You have ninety seconds.
Well, Dean gave a very, very thorough and good response, so yes, it is to have vision, set vision, policy. I also think it is to be well-informed, to read all of the information that the city manager and staff gives a city council member, you know, making sure that you understand it, asking your questions, just be really engaged. But I also think you need to be an advocate for the city and for the residents, and that may include working with our legislators or different nonprofit groups. I think that it's also very important to listen to residents and businesses alike before making decisions. It's really important. I'm actually known for that, and my role as a school board member is really doing a lot of outreach to people to get their take and their opinions about different things that the body may be taking up. And that's a really, I think that's a really, really key role, and I have a lot of experience, twelve years' experience working with constituents to get people's feedback and input before decisions are being made. But setting vision and policy is probably the number one and providing the oversight to the city's business is a key, a key role. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Okay, we will move down to Jeff. Jeff, what is the role of a city council member? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you. The role of a city council member is to represent the citizens of Pleasanton. The goal is to balance the interests of the public and those doing business before the city. And competing interests come before the city council all the time. City council members must be wise, must have the temperament for carefully balancing the questions and the issues before it. The city council member must be a champion for the vision of the city and a vision for their own personal and collaborative visions for what the city should achieve to establish the overall priorities for the city, to set goals and priorities and policy that support the vision. The city council also needs to be a good steward of our resources. City council member must be fiercely responsible to the citizens of Pleasanton. They must be fiscally responsible. They must help the city to maintain a strong financial position. In addition to being a steward of resources, they must be a steward of environmental resources. Our city has a climate action plan. The city leaders must be cognizant of that and advocated, and to advocate for all their constituents in identifying and resolving problems that come before them.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, and finally, our last response to this first question. Joel, I will read the question again. What is the role of a city council member? You have ninety seconds.
Dean, sir, thank you for the question. I wish I could have been the first people to answer this question. After three people already gave their answers, I think we already have a very good picture about a city council member, their roles. And to me, city council represents the citizens and making very important and strategic decisions for the future of our small town, our small city. And the city council have, we have five council members, and they manage only two employees. One is a city manager, the other one is a city attorney, and through the city manager, we give up, set up guidelines for the different departments, which includes a fair department, a police department, and definitely, city council members should not be micromanaging those departments. They should work with our city manager to work on that. And the city council also set up policies, as other candidates have mentioned. And another important role is a city council member represents the city, sitting in different committees, working with other cities, working with state, county, and different level legislators to be advocate for policies which could influence, impacted, impact Pleasanton. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, that concludes question number one. Okay, so for question number two, Jamie, we're going to start with you. And so I'm going to, this is, this is a two-part question that focuses on housing. Okay, so we're going to go through the first part, and then we'll follow up with the second part. So Jamie, do you support having the city of Pleasanton take the lead on a conversation with the Stone Ridge Mall developers and the Harrison Street developer to propose affordable housing on the Stone Ridge site and market-rate housing on Harrison? Why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Okay, so this is hypothetical, right?
This is, this is, this is, now, or you want to make it, yes?
So affordable on Stone Ridge, I think, just from listening to some of the conversation, there are four different owners at the Stone Ridge Mall, so I do think it's going to take a lot of conversation and planning to figure out what works. The owners have expressed some concern about building all affordable because they just won't make any money doing that. So I think it's going to really take some rolling up some sleeves and having the right people at the right table to have those discussions to figure out how to have affordable. Do I think there should be affordable at Stone Ridge? Absolutely. You know, it just came to my attention that in the school district, we have a hundred and twenty-two teachers that make up about twenty percent of our school district staff, and they actually are products of our own, of our own community. They went to school here. So I'm very curious to find out how many can actually afford to live here. Could we have market rate at Harrison Street? I don't know if that developer would be interested in having market rate, but if they were, I would be all for it if it included parking and wasn't five stories high.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Jeff, we're going to move to you for this question. Again, I will read, I will read, I will read the question again. So do you support having the city of Pleasanton taking the lead on a conversation with the Stone Ridge Mall developers and the Harrison Street developer to propose affordable housing on the Stone Ridge site and market-rate housing on Harrison? And the question is, why or why not?
Thanks. I do support the city taking the lead on a conversation with developers at Stone Ridge Mall to propose affordable housing there. I do not support having the stone, having city leaders have that conversation with Harrison Street to have market rate there. The one saving grace of Harrison Street is that it is all a hundred percent affordable housing right now. As much as I disagree with putting the location there and its height, and it's it's not fitting in with the character of the community, not fitting with the downtown plan, the saving grace is that it's all affordable. I am involved with the planning commission as someone who helped create the draft housing element that was approved by the city council and is now before the state for review. The planning commission designated the areas around the Bart stations, including the one near Stone Ridge, for denser housing as a result of a need to be smart about where housing is located for transit-oriented development. That, however, is a mixed-use concept. All of the housing there will not be a hundred percent affordable. It'll be commercial, it'll be residential, as well as housing. So the whole needs of the entire community are being considered there. I was at the Stone Ridge Framework Workshop that was held on Monday. Hundred fifty-three people joined, large attendance. The whole area needs to be part of a comprehensive plan for what happens at Stone Ridge.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so we're going to move up to Joel. Joel, I will read the question for you again. Do you support having the city of Pleasanton take the lead on a conversation with the Stone Ridge Mall developers and the Harrison Street developers to propose affordable housing on the Stone Ridge site and market-rate housing on Harrison? Why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thank you for the question, James. Housing is a very critical issue for our city, and we are going through the housing element discussions, and there are many places we can look into, and the Stone Ridge Mall area is one of that. For the most, one of the recent city council meetings, the city council has already approved the framework, and that's a great opportunity for us to develop a greater and a new area for for our city, for the role of the city. I would support the city council to participate in the conversations with developers. I think the city council role is zoning, it's not the building, but we should talk with all parties and invite them and bring new ideas for us to, to the, to the better future of Pleasanton. And for Stone Ridge Mall area, I would like to see that a variety of housing, not only affordable housing. And for Harrison Street, for that one, again, I would support the participation of the discussions with developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, so we will finish up with Dean. Dean, I'll read the question for you again. Do you support having the city of Pleasanton, the city of Pleasanton, taking the lead on a conversation with the Stone Ridge Mall developers and the Harrison Street developer to propose affordable housing on the Stone Ridge site and market-rate housing on Harrison? Why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you for the question, James. I'm actually going to relate this question to the question we just answered in first saying that I don't think it's the role of the city council to be doing either of those things. The city is currently going through, as others have mentioned, a variety of different processes to decide what works for the city, the housing element plan at the broader level for the city, identifying sites where housing can go. And then here in District One, the Stone Ridge Element, sorry, the Stone Ridge Framework Plan, which will help bring together all the stakeholders, including the community, the owners of the land, and other groups that will be impacted, to see what makes the most sense there. I also attended with that city plant, Planning Commissioner Nyver, the Stone Ridge Mall Frameworks First Community event the other day, and sitting through that, it's just very clear that we're in the very early stages of deciding what will go there. So I'm supportive of having, you know, affordable housing there, market-rate housing, mixed-use housing, whatever makes the most sense after that process is what I think is most appropriate to go there. Same with the Harrison Street project. I wouldn't want to dictate what goes there. I would help, you know, as a city council member, guide the city through these various different processes to make sure that whatever gets done is something that the community agrees with.
Very good. Thank you, Dean. So we're going to, we're going to have a quick little follow-up on this question, and we will start with Jeff on the follow-up. Jeff, please name specific locations in the city where you would support workforce housing developments. You've got ninety seconds.
You mentioned workforce housing. Workforce housing is different from the low-income housing and very low-income housing that's called for in our regional housing need allocation numbers for which we designed the housing element. Workforce housing is housing for our teachers, for our city employees, for police and firefighters, for those who can't afford to live in Pleasanton because of the high housing costs. And this would include children of residence as well. The locations for such workforce housing could be any of the twenty-four areas that have been identified, rather, twenty-three, I guess, since we excluded Donlin, that have been identified in the draft housing element. Places for the achievement of low-income and very low-income housing are things that need to be penciled out by developers. The city can't force developers to build on any of these properties. The city can encourage and by its policies support the construction of mixed-use properties and also properties that are and can be a hundred percent affordable, a hundred percent affordable, meaning in the arena context, to apply to low and very low income. But as far as workforce housing goes, for all of our employees and city residents, that can be any of the identified sites in the housing element, and I would encourage that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Joel, we're going to move up to you. So again, the question is, please name specific locations in the city where you would support workforce housing developments. You have ninety seconds. please name specific locations in the city where you would support workforce housing developments. You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um. I would not name any of the locations. I think uh the city council has selected the twenty-five size and after Dunland side, we still have a twenty-four size and uh um we already identified uh uh those sites, uh hopefully those uh um meeting the requirement of uh um um the arena numbers and we are waiting for the EIR environmental impact report. Uh, I would uh wait for the result of the environmental impact re- report and then um work um together to find the the best locations for workhouse, workforce housing. Uh, I take a workforce housing as a very important uh topic um because of um I do want our um teachers, firefighters, police officers and the other other professional workers uh on to be able to live in the city and close to where their work and uh I would uh not name of again uh location, uh I would wait for the EIR and then um find uh what's the best location for the work workforce housing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Joel. Okay, so we will move to Dean. Dean, please name specific locations in the city where you would support workforce housing developments. You have ninety seconds.
Uh, thank you for the question. So um when it comes to workforce housing, I think it's important to start by answering this question with how you go about making workforce housing. So workforce housing is housing that we, you know, identify as um uh being for teachers, uh first responders, younger workers, you have to identify who in the workforce you're um looking to make that housing for. And then you have to have the city and regional partners or the state or another or entity help fund it because you're kind of, you gotta build the housing, subsidize it and get the resources needed to make it uh you know, specifically workforce housing. So one site or a couple of sites that um come to mind for workforce housing is the school district sites. Um, I could see us doing workforce housing for our teachers there. I've talked to a couple of our uh city school board members who have expressed interest and excitement about the possibility. There are various other cities in this state that have brought together the school district and the city and nonprofits and gotten grants from the state um and other entities to build that workforce housing for teachers. Uh, so I think you know, you'd have to work with the s- the school board to make sure that they're uh okay with it, but um those school district sites seem to me to be a very good opportunity to build workforce housing for our teachers.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Okay, finally, Jamie, uh we're going to ask you the same question. Please name specific locations in the city where you would support workforce housing developments. You have ninety seconds.
Hey, thanks for the question. I think wherever the property is free, ha-ha. Um, that, that makes it work. The numbers work really well. Um. You know, it was a while ago when the su- this current superintendent first came on board when I was a school board member, that was one of the first things that I sat down to talk to him about is how can we do workforce housing for our school staff? It's not just the teachers, but all the school staff. Um, there are many models around the state now that um have different criteria of how they allow their school staff to um obtain the housing. Some of it is for um a a designated amount of time. Some of them help them save um save up money towards a down payment, so their rent would go towards uh down payment money for them. There's many, many really amazing models that are happening all over the state. And we need to take advantage of the fact that the school district does own some property that could be potentially um in a great spot to do. Um. We did sit down and and talk to a nonprofit housing developer um many years ago and just did kind of a back-of-the-envelope um look on how it would work and if the finances would be there and you know, it's a, it's a very uh doable thing when you own the property. So um where would it go? It would, you know, it, I would choose where the school district owns land, but we do have this housing element and if it was somewhere that was identified in the housing element, I would hope that it fits in um to whatever the plan is for the entire city.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Thank you. Okay, that concludes this question. Okay, I'm gonna jump down here a little bit. Um, this next question, we're gonna start with Joel. Okay, Joel, this is gonna be a question about uh school board stuff. So recognizing that the Pleasant and Unified School District, Unified School District Board of Trustees is a separately elected board and our city council doesn't have jurisdiction over their decisions. What role do you see the city council can and should play in relationship with these two elected bodies? And connected to that, Joel, do you support or oppose Measure I? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you, James. Um. Strengthening the city and the school partnership is uh one of uh my priorities. I have a two-school-age children. Uh, I drop them, I, I go to uh drop them to school twice and pick them up twice a day and uh I um myself will work as um a a member of a school side council for Harvest Park. Um. I work with our this school uh all the time and uh um or but in the meantime, a school and the uh city are two different uh entities and they are governed by different boards. Uh, however, we are all in the same city. There are many things that we can collaborate. Uh, I support a school resource officer program uh that is a greater program to keep uh um our schools and our campus safe and that's a city-funded uh program. That is just a one of the many examples of how school can work with our uh how, how city can help our school. And regarding the measure one, uh I do support a measure one. Uh, as I said, um it's a a parent of a two-school age children and I care about our school facilities. Uh, I see the deteriorating conditions of our school facility. I see um on the major is the only, the only option to do a larger scale uh infrastructure upgrade, so I do support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, so Dean, you're gonna be seconded up on this question again. Recognizing the Pleasant and Unified School District Board of Trustees is a separately elected board and our city council doesn't have jurisdiction over their decisions. What role do you see the city council can and should play in the relationship between these two elected bodies? And do you support or oppose Measure I? You have ninety seconds.
Uh, thanks for the question. So I, I think there are two different for ways I look at this question. One is what is the official way that the city can, you know, work with our schools and what are some of the unofficial ways um that the elected members of the city council can be supportive of our schools? So um, you know, as Joel said and as you all know, uh having Pleasant and have a strong partnership between the city and our schools is fundamental to the success and the attractiveness of the city. Um, so to that end, some of the official ways that the city can work with our school district, you already see it in the SROs. Really important that the city continue to help fund that program. It's a program that's you know, supported by the vast majority of parents who are in our schools. Um, and I think that is a good example of the city and and school district working as good partners together in an official capacity. I mentioned workforce housing earlier. I think it would be amazing if we could get the city to work in partnership with the school district on making sure we can house our teachers uh who are in our district. And when it comes to the school bond, uh Measure One, I am supportive of it. You know, um, we have many young families here in the city who have put their entire life savings in the down payment of a home, have a mortgage with one point five, two million dollars uh for that home so that their kids could come to the city and and uh go to our schools. So I think it's important that those schools um live up to their uh reputation and continue to thrive with everything they need.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, Jamie, uh we're gonna give you the same question. Again, recognizing Pleasant and Unified School District Board of Trustees is a separately elected board and our city council doesn't have jurisdiction over their decisions. What role do you see that the city council can and should play in the relationship between those two elected bodies and do you support or oppose Measure I? I'm calling it Measure I, Dean. I know you said Measure One, but we're, we're all talking about the same thing here. So you got ninety seconds, Joel. Jamie.
Okay, um, let's see where to begin. Um, the school district and the board and the city council absolutely needs to work together very closely and collaboratively. Uh, the two bodies are the community leaders. Um, and I think that uh the, the both bodies set the tone for the city um and the school district about uh just how we operate as a city and, you know, feeling our community pride and our community inclusion and just it, it's really important that they work together. Um, the bond is absolutely necessary if we want to continue being a thriving community. Um, schools are a big part of a community. It also helps this community maintain its uh real estate value. And when you look at our neighboring cities, their schools uh are new or newly remodeled and they look amazing. And we are losing our competitiveness. Um, when you look at our school facilities, if people are moving here and they're looking at Dublin or or San Ramon or Pleasanton are their choices, they're gonna see the schools and those schools are in much, much better and more modern shape. Those communities have invested in their schools and Pleasanton needs to step up and do the same. It is not um great that our students and our teachers have to work in subpar facilities. So um supporting the bond is vitally important to the future of our community.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, finally, Jeff, you get your last one for this question again. Recognizing the Pleasant and Unified School District Board of Trustees is a separately elected board and our city council does not, does not have jurisdiction over their decisions. What role do you see the city council can and should play in the relationship between these two elected bodies? And of course, do you support, support or oppose Measure I? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you. Um, I'm the parent of three children who all attended and graduated from uh Pleasanton Schools, so this is a matter that's very near and dear to my heart and also for the benefit of all the uh other kids that I see attending the local school. Lydson is just right down the street from me. Um, we're talking about their futures. Um, in speaking with uh members of the uh school board, current members, um, it's my understanding that Pleasanton and the city have been working together and cooperatively very closely already, and I see very good reasons for strengthening that partnership and cooperation. Uh, it's, it seems to be benefiting both parties and there are even greater benefits I can see from um for the collaboration and partnering. The um uh for example, the gymnasium is gymnasiums at Harvest Park are jointly owned by the city and uh the school district. Um, that has proved to be very uh useful and very beneficial to all the users of those facilities and ensures maximum use of those facilities for the benefit of 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 all people. Um, the traffic and road and lighting improvements that were made outside of Put Hill High School uh that happened at the same time as the uh um refreshment, uh revitalization of the uh front there um are also a benefit. So, and lastly, I support Measure I. Um, it does increase property taxes. That's a concern. Uh, it's the school that was promised in twenty sixteen needs to be built this time.
Thank, thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Okay, very good. So that concludes this question. We're going to move on to our fifth question and this one we will start with Dean. So Dean, business owners voice concern about Pleasanton's permitting and planning process, not only about the cost, but also the time it takes to get things done. So two parts to this question that you'll answer it all at once. The first part is what is your opinion of Pleasanton's permitting and planning process? And B, what would you do as a city council member to improve the process if you believe improvement's starting? Okay, I'm gonna give you ninety seconds and uh you can be here when the timer shows up.
Thank you for the question. Um, so if this is a opinion that our uh business community is saying they're experiencing, then I would first start by saying that I would trust uh their assessment of it. I do not own or operate a business, so I would go to the business community, figure out if uh if that is the case. Um. If elected to the city council, I would want to have a working and close partnership with the chamber and with small business communities um in my district and then downtown and the, and the city to make sure that um I'm apprised uh with the challenges that are facing um our small businesses. Uh, I do think that um if there are challenges when it comes to permitting and the processing of it, um and that's impacting the ability for our uh businesses to thrive here. Uh, I would want to, from the city council, direct staff and direct, rather, the city manager to direct staff uh to look into it and uh come back to us with a report and come up with solutions for how we can speed things up. Um, I do think that uh with all the different ways the city council is currently engaged in micromanaging businesses, uh I think I would rather steer away from some of those more bureaucratic approaches to the job and steer towards how we can help small businesses and permitting and the time it takes to process is one of them. Uh, I would wanna address those issues.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, next will be Jamie. So again, Jamie, business owners voice concern about Pleasanton's permitting and planning process, not only about the cost, but also the time it takes to get things done. So first is, uh what is your opinion of Pleasanton's permitting and planning process if you have one? And then what would you do as a city council member to improve that process if you believe one? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thanks for this question. This is a really good one. Um, I have had an earful from business um uh business owners and property owners around town about the difficulties in the permitting process in the city. But on the other side of that, um historically, um it was worse than it is now. Um, apparently what we have now is the improved version, but I'm still hearing that it's a huge, huge challenge. Um, when I first decided to run for city council, people were saying to me, oh, are you gonna do something about all the vacancies down on Main Street? And I said, well, the city council doesn't really specifically have jurisdiction over that. But what is happening is many of the vacancies, um the property owners, you know, have somebody who's interested in renting their their building and they go to the city, they bring their plans and they find out how incredibly onerous it is and how expensive it is and how long it's gonna take to get through. They decide to go elsewhere. So it, it, it concerns me because it impacts our revenue to the city. It impacts the vibrancy of, in, in case of the Main Street. Um, it's, it's really difficult. Uh, how we can streamline the permitting process a little bit better and that the city needs to have maybe of a more can-do attitude instead of can't-do attitude. But I don't know all the details and the insides and outs and what the challenges are. Um, so that is definitely a conversation that I, that I'd like to have and look into. I have more questions than I have answers.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you. Okay, we'll move over to Jeff. Jeff, same question. Uh, business owners voice concern about Pleasanton's permitting and planning process, not only about the cost, but also about the time it takes to get things done. So what is your opinion of a Pleasanton's permitting and planning process if you have one? And what would you do as a city council member to improve the process if one needs to be made? And you have ninety seconds.
Hey, thank you. As an engineer and a current planning commissioner, uh my attitude is to let the facts and the figures do the talking. I would always seek to understand the details and the concerns more clearly. So first step would be to sit down with the business owners uh to understand the uh, you know, exactly what the concerns specifically are. The devil's in the details, so uh if there are, and I know there are certain situations that must be um that they must be referring to, so I wouldn't, I, I wanna know those. Um, we, we work and we now have a uh terrific new city manager, Jerry Bowden. Uh, I'd like to have, you know, once we identify those along with the city manager and the other members of the council to sit down and work with um the business community and to understand the point of view uh for the process. We have a standard process. If it doesn't work, it needs to be fixed. If it can be made better, if there are synergies that can be achieved, by all means, we should do them. Um, as a planning commissioner, I see the planning process from the point of view, pose new developments. Um, the permitting process is a little more uh outside the purview of planning commission, but um I want city leaders to be able to work with businesses and understand their concerns uh and sit down and, and make it better if it can be made better. Thank you.
Hey. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Joel, we'll come to you as a last response to this question. I will read it again. Business owners voice concern about Pleasanton's permitting and planning process, not only about the cost, but about the time it takes to get things done. What is your opinion of Pleasanton's permitting and planning process if you have one? And what would you do as a city council member to improve this process if one needs to be made? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Uh, through the campaign, I have talked to many, many, many different peoples. Uh, I do. Uh, I am aware of uh um some um uh feedbacks from our business community regarding um the lengthy process uh permitting and uh um this process, so I'm aware of that. Um. Um, and when I'm in the city council, I build And when I'm in the city council, I will look into the details. So I have already heard from the business community and I will work with the city staffs and the managers to look into the process, to understand more about the process and to work together to improve the process. I I believe that any process can be improved and I'm very pro to the business that our business represents sixty percent of the revenue of our city and they are very critical part of our community. I have the full support to our business owners and the small business owners and and the business people. So I pledge to look into the issue and to work with them and to find a better way to improve for the process. So I I will look into that and thank you for the question.
Thank you, Joel. One person show here. Okay, very good. So that concludes our our question number five. And so we're going to start question number six with Jamie. And Jamie, we're going to move over to a topic that's been in front of us quite a bit lately, water. So I'm going to read the question and there's a couple pieces to it, but it's a single answer. So as the current population, as the current population rate increases per year, the population of Pleasanton could reach over ninety thousand within the ten years. So what are your suggestions to improve the stability and quality of Pleasanton's water supply? And what programs should the city undertake to ensure it's a sustainable and safe water system is in place as the population grows? So you get ninety seconds starting now.
Yes, the water issue is a very serious concern and the city needs to prioritize our water situation. As I've said before, you know, I'm not a water scientist or a water expert, and I know that the city has been directed to the staff to really make this a priority to work to come up with different recommendations that they can present to the city council. So I look forward to those recommendations. But it is definitely something that we need to keep an eagle eye on and make sure that we have enough water. I I good, healthy, clean drinking, safe water that's chemical free. But I do think that our partnership with Zone Seven is vitally important. They are the water authority for us in Pleasanton. And historically, that relationship hasn't always been very good. And I know that it's better, but it needs to continue to be a very tight, close relationship because we need them to help us with our water situation. So I am looking forward to the staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. So next up will be Jeff. Jeff, again, I'll read the question for you. At the current population rate increase per year, the population of Pleasanton could reach over ninety thousand within the next ten years. What are your suggestions to improve the stability and quality of Pleasanton's water supply? And what programs should the city undertake to ensure that a sustainable and safe water system is in place as the population grows? Ninety seconds starting now.
Thank you. The water that flows into our homes must always be safe to drink. Eighty percent of Pleasanton's water is supplied by Zone Seven Water Agency. The other twenty percent comes from Pleasanton's wells. Both of these sources are threatened with contamination by forever chemicals called PFAS, which through decades of use have now reached the valley's groundwater. These chemicals pose a threat to our health because they build up in our bodies over time. They'll continue to spread in the groundwater. Pleasanton has already shut down one of its main wells because of this contamination and the other two are threatened. If we're to continue drinking the city's water and make sure the system can operate the way it should, then action is needed to treat and remove these substances from the water. As an alternative, the city is exploring the purchase of water from Zone Seven to replace the twenty percent that comes from our wells. So our cooperation with Zone Seven is essential. Either solution is going to end up being costly and will entail some uncertainty. But action is critical to ensure that the water we drink remains safe. The next city council is going to have some major decisions to make and you know, I am helped make those decisions. The solutions that have been proposed include water treatment and well rehabilitation for Pleasanton to go into the water treatment business long term. That may be what is required. And if that's what's required for safe drinking water for everyone, then I'm for it.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. We'll move up to Joel. Joel, same question. Let me read it for you again. At the current population rate increase per year, the population of Pleasanton could reach over ninety thousand within the next ten years. What are your suggestions to improve the stability and quality of Pleasanton's water supply? And what programs should the city undertake to ensure that a sustainable and safe water system is in place as the population grows? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thanks for the question, James. We all want a safe drinking water and as a city council member, I will make sure that the Pleasanton residents get a safe drinking water and getting safe, safe drinking, making sure that the Pleasanton President getting safe drinking water is my top priority, one of my top priorities. And in Pleasanton, we have, the water is a pretty complicated issue. And we have aging wells and we also need to work with our partner Zone Seven. And we also need to deal with PFOs issue. And the current city council developed a plan on filtering and on renovating our aging water wells with the new regulation and some emerging tougher standard on PFOs and we decided to pause on that. And there will be tough decisions for us to make. And that's pretty challenging, both technically and commercially from I have a PC in engineering and I do have the experience on water treatment plan from electrical engineering side. And I also managed a multimillion dollar business. I think I can help to make the best decision for our city from both engineering and business side. And to make the best decision for our city to have the safe drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you. Okay, and we'll end this question with Dean. Dean, again, at current population rate increase per year, the population of Pleasanton could reach ninety thousand within the next ten years. What are your suggestions to improve the stability and quality of Pleasanton's water supply? And what programs should the city undertake to ensure that a sustainable and safe water system is in place as the population grows? You have ninety seconds.
Thanks for the question. So during this campaign, I've come to see this question as the most important and complicated question to answer. But it's very important because we have to figure out how we maintain having a safe, a reliable and sustainable source of water for our city and its residents. That question is now becoming much more challenging as we have a shortage of water and as we're entering a new, you know, stage of of climate change. So in figuring out how to come to solutions, I think there are a couple of things. First, I want to say that we need to be a better regional partner as a city to our water agencies, both this Zone Seven and DSRSD. I think there have been recent decisions and made by the current council where that those partnerships were not respected and were not valued as much as they should be. We're not in the driver's seat when it comes to those relationships. If I'm elected to the city council, I will advocate as well as I can for the city, but it also requires being a collaborative partner with those agencies so that we can get the best outcome for our city, not just dictating what we want. When it comes to solutions, I'm supportive of the city taking the stance to kind of put a pause on things. I want to look at treatment, blending, new water sources. And the last thing I'll add is I know that the chamber came out in support of building a treatment plant. I also spoke into people at Zone Seven who don't think it's a good idea for Pleasanton to get in the water treatment business. I honestly don't know what my answer is, but I'm looking forward to continue to look into the issue.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Okay, that concludes question number six. Okay, we will now move on to question seven, which will go to Jeff first. Jeff, this is kind of a short question. A police oversight commission, should one be established and why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you for that question. The question has to do with accountability for our police officers, police department. The feedback in the latest community survey last August, the performance of our Pleasanton Police Department was overwhelmingly positive. There are improvements that the city police department has made as evidenced in their recent semi annual report at the last city council meeting. There are good things to come out of that report. Concerns around how the Pleasanton Police Department deals with mental health situations, in particular with the school resource officers is is quite encouraging. The information on the new pilot program for alternate response unit with mental health experts assisting in those types of calls or taking the lead. Those are all steps in the right direction. As far as an oversight commission, no, I don't support an oversight commission. In fact, you know, it's been said, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I'll reserve judgment on to whether it's broken or not. I need to learn a lot more. It may be that an auditor might be a possible solution, but to say that I need more evidence would be be insensitive to those who have suffered tragic consequences.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we will move up to Joel. So Joel, the police oversight commission, should one be established and why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Public safety is my top priority. I do not see the need of oversight committee or commission. I believe our city council is represented, elected by elected by our citizens and they represent our city and they provided the proper oversight for the police department through city manager. And actually, I believe police department report to the city council twice a year and we already have sufficient oversight from the city council. I do not see the need of another committee or commission. On top of that, all of our officers are professionals. They are following the policies and the procedures the city council has placed. I do not see the need of having this oversight committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Very good. Okay, Dean, we'll move to you. Very simple question. Police Oversight Commission, should one be established? Why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you for the question, James. Like has been previously said, like the vast majority of residents in Pleasanton, I believe that our police department is doing an excellent job. I am also very proud to have earned the endorsement of our Police Officers Association. I strongly support preserving public funding for public safety. And I also believe that the police department is currently in very capable hands. Yeah, I've watched the most, I was in the city council chambers for the most recent report from Chief Swing. I've watched past reports. I think those are always very thorough. He's very transparent. And watching him and his staff give those reports, it's just very clear that our city is in capable hands and that our police department is, you know, engaged in addressing and reforming things that need to be reformed. I think they're doing a very good job at that. And I believe with your primary question, when it comes to whether or not we need to spend more money on oversight or reporting, the question you have to first ask yourself is, is there any evidence that those things are needed? And frankly, I do not see that evidence right now. I do support providing our officers with all the training and equipment that they need. And I do support providing appropriate responses for people experiencing mental health crises, but but as I said, I think our city police department is doing an excellent job at that and they already do many of the things reformers are asking for in other cities.
Thank you. Thank you, Dean. Okay, Jamie, we will end this question with you. Simple question. Police Oversight Commission, should one be established? Why or why not? You have ninety seconds.
Thanks. You should know, James, that no question is simple here. So for about nine years in my role at Alameda County, I got to work shoulder to shoulder with law enforcement agencies. And I have a very, very good understanding of what their role is and what their role isn't. And I believe that our police department does a very good job. The whole twelve years that I was on the school board, we never had one issue or complaint that came forward about our, about the SROs. So very happy about that. I'm glad that the chief has that chief advisory group. I think that that serves, you know, a certain purpose. But along with the others, I don't think that an oversight committee is really necessary right now because things are going well. We do have the two year reports that come to the city council. They seem very open, transparent, you know, and happy to collaborate. So I just don't really see a need for it. If that ever changed, I think that would be a good idea. We do have one council member who really would like to have that and would like to spend a lot of money on an outside consulting firm and have this oversight committee. And I just really don't think it's necessary at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. That concludes question number seven. So we're going to move over to question eight. Now, obviously, candidates and city council members, financial stewardship is an extremely important part of their job. So this question is a little bit of a drawn out question, but I like to listen to it. I won't necessarily read this question every time in its entirety. But with the stock market decline, excuse me, the first answer for this question will be Joel. You'll be first. With the stock market decline, CalPERS losses may impact pension contributions by drawing critical financial resources away from other city services and priorities. Lackluster return will mean California towns, counties and school districts will face higher annual pension contributions during the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. So how does this impact Pleasanton? And then sort of more broadly, you know, how is this going to affect the city's budgeting and financing and where can the city improve its budgeting? So focus really specifically on the question about the CalPERS losses and the contributions to the pension. But that's in the context of the financial responsibilities you have as city council member. Okay. So I'll give you ninety seconds. Joel, you're first.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Regarding the pension fund, I talked to the city manager very recently and to understand better about the the financial situation and the budget situation for our city. I understand that in our city, we have a trust fund that is called the one fifteen and that's that's a great program to use to to prepare us for some situations like this. And I think that's a greater fitness vehicle we can use. And regarding the economic, potential economic downturn and the looming economic recession, I want to say no one has the crystal ball and that there are many possibilities and the different people have different views. The key is we need to have a member who has the capability to lead the city council to make sure we have fiscal stability in whatever the situation is. As a manager, I have managed the multimillion dollar projects and the business and I want, I I can use my professional experience to help the city to get through the city, whatever the situation we are going to face in the next several years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joel. So Dean, again, stock markets decline, withdraw critical financial resources away from other city services because of the CalPERS losses. Lackluster return will mean California towns, counties and school districts will face higher annual pension contribution during their twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. So how does this impact Pleasanton? How would you address it specifically? And then more broadly, concerns about the budgeting and financing process or where the city can improve how it does its finances. And you have nine seconds.
Thank you for the question. So, you know, I think right now it's clear to everyone that we're entering a period of high financial uncertainty, economic uncertainty. And having gone through the two thousand eight financial crisis, I was just finishing college when that happened. I saw firsthand how that could affect livelihoods, city budgets, state budgets. So it reinforces in my mind why it's so important that we have a rainy day fund and reserves at the city level so that we can honor the commitment we made to our retired city staff, firefighters, police officers. To that, and I think that the city of Pleasanton compared to others in the region does a very good job. We do have that trust fund. The city has been very mindful of making sure that we are meeting our obligations. The city has been very mindful of making sure that we are meeting our obligations and capable of meeting them down the road. When it comes to the retirement accounts of our city staff. But I do think that when it comes to budgeting, if you look at a recent city council decision to take out a million dollars. I believe it was a million dollars, a significant chunk of change out of the reserve and rainy day fund to go for CIP priorities. I don't think that was a good decision. And you know, when we enter a period of financial uncertainty, we don't want to be letting go of city staff or firefighters or police because those are the times when city services are more in needed more than ever. So that's my, my approach to how I would approach the question.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you. Okay, Jamie, you're going to be next on this. So again, stock markets decline has led to CalPERS losses, which may impact pension contributions by drawing critical financial resources away from other city services and priorities. Priorities. So lackluster return will mean California towns, counties and school districts will face higher annual pension contributions during their twenty-four or twenty-five fiscal year. How does this impact Pleasanton? And how would you address this issue specifically? And this is to you, Jamie. Hopefully you're going to go with next. And then more generally, in regards to the city's budgeting and financing, how can the city improve that process? So Jamie, I'm not sure if you're having technical difficulties. I'll give you the ninety seconds. And if you come on in a moment, I'll accept this, but I have to start the clock.
Okay, I need a new mouse. Really sorry about this. I can't get the video going. You'll just have to look at my picture. So I have a lot of experience with talking about pension liability, being on the school board for twelve years. That being a public entity is definitely something we talked about and had to provide oversight to every single year. When I first entered my role as a school board member, it was the year of the Great Recession. So I know what it's like to go through those tough financial times for a public agency. It's very challenging and it does require an Eli and really, we actually had a lot of extra meetings that it might require that. But I do have experience with oversight, with pension liability. From what I understand, the city is in pretty good shape with watching over what's happening. They have established this one fifteen pension trust fund. It's irrevocable. It can only be used to make pension contributions. And there are specific guidelines to it. So this is the way that most public agencies handle their pension liability. And I think the city is on the right track and doing the right thing. But it does require that the city council members provide that oversight. And I have done that for many years.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Okay, the last responder to this question, Jeff, I will give you the question again. With the stock market decline, CalPERS losses may affect, may impact pension contributions by drawing critical financial resources away from other city services and priorities. This lackluster return will mean California towns, counties and school districts will face higher annual pension contributions during their twenty-four or twenty-five fiscal year. How does this impact Pleasanton and how we address this specific issue? And then more broadly, in regards to budgeting and financing, how can the city be better at that? How can the city improve? And again, you'll get ninety seconds.
Okay, thank you. As any good financial manager would do. One would look out into the future. One would have various scenarios that one would look at to see what the liabilities would be like extending out over time. Our city has done this. Our city manager, I sat down with the city manager and we discussed this very question about pension liabilities. The pension expenses annually are forecast to go up in the twenty twenties as time goes on. Then start declining into the twenty thirties. And you know, there's a state law that's already on the books that's creating a new retirement plan that is going to follow CalPERS. And it's that law in the twenty twenties that will be reducing the annual obligations, I mean, throughout the twenty thirties. So they're going to up in the twenty twenties peak and then start going down in the twenty. So pension costs, their commitments that the city must meet. We have the pension trust fund that's been established. It's irrevocable. As a city, we keep our commitments. I'd like to go back to a little bit about financial stewardship on a previous question with regard to the endorsement of the Pleasant Police Officers Association. The city will be engaged in upcoming contract negotiations not too far in the future. I think it's patently wrong to put oneself in the position of being beholden and potentially addicted into by a union with which you're negotiating on behalf of the city. So it's a complex negotiation.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Okay, very good. So folks, we're at six twenty-five right now. We started about ten minutes late. So our time to end is finally within six forty. So I have one final question for you and then we'll get to our, our closing statements. This last question, I'm sort of torn between a couple of them here. But I think I want to ask you somebody's, maybe you're just a little bit more about your personal, sort of how you do things outside of your job. So this question is going to start with Dean. Dean, nonprofit organizations are an important part of our business community. It's often the case that local business and community leaders are involved with nonprofits as a way to give back and as an extension of their own desire to get involved. Please share with us which nonprofit you're affiliated with, if any, your role in the group and the reasons you connected with them. You get ninety seconds.
Thank you for the question. So I am very politically oriented and have always been involved in community groups that are aimed at increasing civic participation. So local, you know, party groups as well as local voter engagement groups have been the primary way I engage with the community through nonprofits. It is hard to kind of, for me to disaggregate my job with the support I do and the work I do for nonprofits. Because a big part of my role working as a district director for Assembly Member Wicks is working hand in hand with our nonprofits in her district. And so, you know, in that role, I work with nonprofits who are in the art space. Other civic engagement spaces, education spaces, when they're applying for grants to the state for, for funding. So it, it's hard to disaggregate the two for me because my job is so all consuming when it comes to that kind of work. But you know, I, I will frequently find myself writing letters of support on behalf of my boss for nonprofits seeking grants from the state. And I think that's the biggest way I contribute to nonprofits in my life.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dean. Okay, the next on this question is going to be Jamie. Again, Jamie, nonprofit organizations are an important part of our business community and our community. It's often the case that local businesses and community leaders are involved with nonprofits as a way to give back and as an extension of their own desire to get involved. Please share with us which nonprofit you're affiliated with, if any, your role in the group and the reason you connected with them. Ninety seconds.
Okay, you know, sort of like Dean, I am a public servant by day. And so in my free time, it just all sort of all spills over. I am a member of the Pleasant and Civic Arts Commission currently. I am a co-chair for the Tri-Valley Chapter of the Asian Pacific Islander Public Affairs Association, better known as the Papa. And that is a nonprofit. I've been on, on the board there. And we do a lot of work getting more Asians to be civically engaged. I'm also the co-chair, actually the vice president for Northern California of the Democratic Party Children's Caucus for Northern California. In the past, I've been very involved in the state PTA in the local level and at the state level. I have also founded a nonprofit many, many years ago. So in fact, today I was visiting with Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance and understanding their role in the community and how they are really supporting many of our nonprofits in the community. And I would love to partner with them more and, and allow Pleasanton nonprofits to know more about the organization and the support that they can get from the Tri-Valley nonprofit. So I'm kind of a connector to, if I'm not actually involved deeply in that particular nonprofit. So it's, it's just something that I've always done and will continue to do no matter whether I'm on the city council or not.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you. Jeff, nonprofit organizations are an important part of our business community. It is often the case that local business and community leaders are involved with nonprofits as a way to give back and as an extension of their own desire to get involved. Please share with us which nonprofits you are affiliated with, if any, your role in the group and the reason you connect with them. And you have ninety seconds.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm affiliated with a number of nonprofit groups and I have been in the past. And going into the future, the, in the past, I've been affiliated with youth groups. As my children were growing up, I was an active participant and leader in their activities with YMCA youth groups, with Cub Scouts. As a church, in my church, I am a lay leader in, in that group. And I am also a volunteer for hunger efforts that our church does for outreach. I'm involved in a civic group, a patriotic organization called the Sons of the American Revolution. You know, I've marched in the Veterans Day Parade in Pleasanton in full Revolutionary War regalia. We also take part in Memorial Day observances, placing flowers in cemeteries. I'm an active volunteer in a couple of national nonprofits. Being a very avid sports fan and champion for the underdog. I'm a volunteer with the United States Luge Association, which is a winter Olympic sport that sleds on artificial tracks. I'm an international official with that organization. I volunteer at international races in different locations in the U.S. and Canada. I'm also came back from the World Games organization. That's like a mini Olympics for non-Olympic sports this summer during July. I volunteered in a number of classes there. My Facebook page is full of pictures from that effort and I invite you to look at them.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, finally, Joel. Excuse me, I will read the question again for you, sir. Nonprofit organizations are an important part of our business community. It is often the case that local business and community leaders are involved with nonprofits as a way to give back and as an extension of their own desire to get involved. Please share with us which nonprofits you're affiliated with, if any, your roles in the group and the reasons you connect with them. You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, thanks for the question, for this question. We should have twice off on ninety seconds to tell the whole story. But I don't, I will try to make it as short as possible. I am always passionate about volunteering. And when I started to work, I almost immediately got involved in a nonprofit organization. And so I volunteered there for seventeen years at least. And clevered the letter, became the chairman of the board for that engineering focused nonprofit organization. And also through that organization that opened my eyes, opened my views on the world. I started to move from engineering focused organization to more community focused. And before I left, I, I established some award and to recognize the civic participation for the engineers participating in the civic engagement. And in two thousand and eighteen, I started to focus on our local communities. I co-founded a nonprofit organization called the Tri-Valley Asian Association. And myself involved into many different other nonprofit organizations. And because of my involvement in those volunteering activities, I was awarded by my employer to be one of the eight volunteering awardees among the ninety thousand global employees. Thank you for the question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joel. And thank you all candidates. That concludes our questions for this evening. We will now move to our closing statements. And to start our closing statements, we're going to begin with Jamie. So Jamie, in this case, you're going to get two minutes to give your closing statements and the clock begins now. Jamie, you're not coming through on the speaker. Can I try again? Okay, why don't we do this, Jamie? Why don't you work on your connections? We'll move down and we'll have Jeff give us our first concluding remarks. Jeff, you will have two minutes. You ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Here you go. Two minutes.
Thank you. My family's roots run deep in Pleasanton. As a thirty-plus year resident of Pleasanton and a Pleasanton Planning Commissioner, I understand residents' concerns about Pleasanton today. I have always been sincere and authentic so that voters can see how I think and reach decisions. My votes as a member of the Pleasanton City Council will always be driven by well-informed thinking, concern and judgment about what's best for Pleasanton residents. I have strived to let voters see how I would perform in office. How I would explain and accomplish my priorities and how I would collaborate with other members of the city council and city staff. I have stressed my involvement and votes on current issues as a member of the planning commission. As a gauge of my experience and knowledge of the issues. At every engagement in my campaign, I mentioned my volunteer values of being solution centered. Being a great teammate, respecting others always, listening and serving. Because they're deeply held and it's, those are who I am. In order to make unbiased decisions for the residents of Pleasanton, I pledge not to accept donations from developers. And I am not associated in any way with Silicon Valley billionaires or their favorite groups who funnel money to pro-growth politicians and candidates. In all of these respects, as a member of the city council, not only would I be the better fit for Pleasanton, but also a fighter for Pleasanton. Because our quality of life is under threat. We must fight back. This is our town and our future. I respectfully ask for your vote and I would be honored to receive the chamber's endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Jamie, we're going to move back to you and see if you've got your sound all fixed here.
I think I'm on.
So when the clock begins, so may you.
Okay, I encourage all of the residents of Pleasanton get involved and to shape the future of Pleasanton. Smart and planned growth is important and to the financial future and quality of life that we all dearly value. We need reasonable discussions for reasonable solutions. We all value dearly our quality of life here in Pleasanton. And I envision Pleasanton's continued success through our measured and smart growth and sustainable financial resources. Our city will be safe and secure through its fire police departments. It will be a city where our children can afford to own a home and raise their families. We will enjoy well-maintained city spaces, thriving businesses, clean drinking water and increased community engagement and involvement. The character of Main Street remains iconic and through the efforts of the Museum on Main, residents will learn from the past to be able to move into the future without fear. I have a proven track record of twelve years in public governance and oversight of a hundred and sixty million plus budget. Setting policy, had the pleasure of supervising the POSD superintendent and experience working collaboratively with POSD staff. And I have a deep understanding of our community and experience with constituent engagement and understanding of labor negotiations and the role of a city council member. I also bring a public health lens. I plan to live here for the rest of my life and all the decisions made by the city council will affect me and my family for the rest of my days. I am deeply and truly invested and have the courage and dedication to keep our city on track. I have been endorsed by our Alameda County Assessor Fong Lee, our district attorney, deputy district attorney Terry Wiley, school board members Joan Larson and Mark Miller, Assembly Member Evan Lowe. And the endorsement that I honor the most is from our former city council member, Arnie Olson. Should I be fortunate enough to be elected to the Pleasant City Council? I'll be the first Asian American woman to be elected since the city was incorporated in eighteen ninety-four.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, next, Dean, we're going to go with you, Dean, and you will get two minutes to give your concluding statements. I will give you the two minutes starting right now.
You said me there?
Yes, Dean, you're up next.
Okay. Thank you to the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce for hosting us today. You know, when I was first deciding whether or not I wanted to do this, whether or not I wanted to run for city council. I would speak to people who I know and love. And what I'd say to them is, if I do this, I want to do this to change the tone on the housing discussion here in Pleasanton. Because as someone who's experienced firsthand how difficult it is to make ends meet with the cost of housing here in Pleasanton. That is for me the most important issue. And you know, when I said change the tone, I meant it. And I think you've heard a little bit of what I mean by that here tonight. But I refuse to give in to the cynicism that some other people here in the city have when it comes to discussing very important issues and how we get to solutions to them. And I have hope, I have hope because I knock on doors and I talk to folks who lament the fact that their kids had to move away and they live in Portland or Austin or other places in the country because they couldn't afford to live here anymore. And I meet the parents of kids who are in our schools who, you know, just spent one and a half or two And I meet the parents of kids who are in our schools who, you know, just spent one and a half or two million dollars on a home and put their entire life savings. Into the down payment on that home. They're worried about where their kids are going to be able to live when they grow up. So I don't want to give in to the cynicism, cynicism that, you know, that is part of the tone of the housing discussion here. And so I won't. And I'm very proud of the work I'm doing on this campaign and the broad coalition of supporters. And yes, I am proud. To be endorsed by our police officers and I'm also proud to be endorsed by the Alameda County Democratic Party. I'm proud to be endorsed by our Building Trades Council, by, by our Alameda Labor Council, by the Bay East Association of Realtors. I'm proud of the broad coalition I'm building here and I'd be proud to add the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, and for the final concluding remarks of the evening, Joel, you have two minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Chamber of Commerce, for hosting this candidate forum this eve- this evening. My family have called the Pleasanton home for almost a decade. We lived here long enough to know how much we enjoy our small-town style. And the charm of our historical downtown. I pledge to maintain our small-town style and to keep our historical downtown vibrant. In the meantime, I'm one of the over ten thousand new residents who moved to Pleasanton between twenty ten and twenty twenty. If elected, I'm bringing in new perspectives to the city council. You have already heard from me that my priorities are public safety, sustainability, fiscal stability and the strengthening city-school partnership. One thing which I differentiate myself from my fellow candidates is my experience. So I have a PC in engineering. I have managed a multi-million dollar business and projects. I'm passionate about volunteering. I'm adaptive. I have a track record of success. I'm hopeful. I'm optimistic. I listen to everyone and I can work with everyone. I have a real-world business experience that I will bring to help solve Pleasanton's future challenges. And I will work with the business communities to, to improve our city and the community together. I'm endorsed by almost half of our local elected officials. I'm running a very strong grassroots campaign. I heavily ask for your vote in November. And I will be all very honored to have your vote and also I will be very honored to receive the endorsement from a Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joel, and thank you to all of our candidates. I, I hope it was not too painful for the four of you. Really appreciate your time and for all of our viewers, thank you for joining us this evening. I do want to extend our, the condolences of Julie Testa who wanted to be with her tonight. You have us here tonight. Had some problems on the technical side and just couldn't quite make it happen for her. She was very much looking forward to participating tonight. But for the four of you, thank you again for, for being here tonight. Again, to all of our listeners, please make sure that you seek out these candidates, find more information out about them as a way to further determine your best choice. On behalf of the city council, on behalf of the Pleasanton Chamber of Commerce and specifically our backpack. I appreciate all of your time. Good luck in our upcoming elections and everyone make sure you get out and vote. That concludes our evening. Thank you very much. Take care.
You safe, everyone?
Thank you.